Your cell phones and electronic devices. Ms. Wagner, will you please call the roll? I'd like to note that Mrs. Weinberg is attending the SCPA graduation for us tonight and will be with us shortly.
Ms. Bolton, present. Mr. Craig.
Here.
Ms. Jones.
Here.
Dr. Moffett.
Here.
Mr. Murawski. Ms. Weinberg. President Lindy.
Here. For our folks who are helping us with our technology, are we able to have folks in Hearing of the Public Live tonight? We are. Great. So, members of the public who wish to speak may do so by clicking the chat button now. The chat feature will be open for your requests for five minutes. Please submit your name, your affiliation, your school community, your topic, and your contact information if you would like a direct response to any questions that you might If we could bring up then the slide that has our priorities on it, we will go ahead and move to the next item on the agenda. So, people may have noticed with our most recent board meeting on the ninth, we have our agenda divided into a Part One and a Part Two tonight. Part One, our topics or items that align to board priorities, involve guests or the public or required by law. And so, we're sharing here our current four board-level priorities. Won't share all of them in depth this evening. We did that last time. I would just note that we are in our last month here for these four priorities: ensuring the superintendent has a strong start, supporting the passage of a strong FY23 budget, supporting the adoption of a strong transportation plan, and beginning a governance coaching series. And just say that we are within striking distance of finishing all four of those by the 13th of January. I want to thank everyone on the board and on staff who's helped make that happen. Under number one, ensuring the superintendent has a strong start for the district, we are going to create a couple of minutes here to hear from our superintendent on what she's hearing as part of the listening sessions in her 100-day plan.
Thank you so much. So, we have, moving forward here. I understand. Okay, so I'll go ahead and get started while the team is getting to those particular slides. Thank you. Yes, let's go ahead in advance. I think we'll jump right in. We know by now that we have been really active in moving forward through our engagement and engagement sessions. Let's just go to the next slide, please, because it's not allowing me to move. If we'll go to the next, please. Okay. So, as of May 19th, which was actually at the end of the week last week, at that time, I visited 20-plus schools by that time. As of today, that's up to 32 schools visited since May the 2nd, and that school's all across the, all across the district. For our Listening and Learning Sessions, at this point, we've engaged with individuals through those sessions, over 1,000 individuals through those sessions, 1,116 in terms of our sessions. Really excited about the number of students that we've engaged with. So, at each of our school sites, we do speak with individual classrooms as well. So, not only do we have the sessions that we had here at the Ed Center, but I also speak with students, as I am, at their schools in each of the visits. Listening and learning feedback, also excited that as of last Thursday, we had over 1,200 responses to the survey. And as you see, there is a breakdown in terms of who's responding. Our greatest number of responses have been from employees at 58%, but we do have 20% parents, 16% students, and then the rest are partners. That number has increased. As of today, that number is right about 1,500 in terms of those that have responded. So, we're planning to keep the survey open until June the 1st unless there are recommendations for doing otherwise. I'm sorry, June the 2nd, because that's the last parent engagement session. So far, preliminary themes, and the way that this word all works is the themes that are the largest are the themes that we see the most, that are, they have the most occurrences in the survey. And so, our things that are going well in terms of just pulling out common themes, we see one of those as technology is going really well. The new superintendent made it up there in the survey in terms of going really well. I thought I would pull that out. Access to resources, in-person learning was something else that was going really well. Diverse learning is something that came up also. And there seems to be, from looking at the responses for every single individual that wrote, has written responses to this point, I've read those responses, and there seems to be just a general consensus that there is a positive energy at this point, excitement about being back face-to-face, being able to engage with students, and so that's really important. If I were the superintendent, I would. That's the last question that is on the survey. And common themes as well, the largest theme as we see is one of communication. That was a theme that was really threaded throughout everything that was happening prior to my arrival and the work that the, that the board did in terms of looking at the characteristics that they were looking for in a new superintendent, and that was a common theme then. But if they were me, the conversation has been focused on communication, overall accountability, mental health is a common theme that has also come up for us as well, and transparency was connected to overall communication. So, we still have listening sessions left, and we're doing impromptu sessions as well. I heard that today that we were on NPR for much of the day today. That was not expected. That was as a follow-up to a Black political event, but I hear that that was very positive. And so, several have reached out to me today about that. The official listening sessions that we have coming up, we have our next two parent listening sessions. We have one on May the 24th at Aiken High School. We also have one on June the 1st. I don't see that one listed, and the virtual one is on June the 2nd. So, all three of these are on our website. And on Wednesday, we have a business partner listening session as well that's here at the Ed Center. When I talk about doing them impromptu, I've shared, as we are really having those conversations through the Listening and Learning Sessions, that if you have a location, if there are individuals that you would like for me to come out and speak to, last week I had an opportunity to engage with two or three different groups that may not be captured here, but it's really all about making sure that, that we're truly deeply listening to the community, learning from the, from the community, and then from there, we will really begin to look at how we move forward with the leading. And, President, back to you.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Wright. Thank you for sharing that update with us. We'll be excited to continue to update the public on our progress towards those priorities in our next meeting. And we'll transition now to the next item on the agenda, which is the Hearing of the Public. Each speaker will have two minutes, and will direct all comments to the presiding officer. Once a request to speak has been granted, you'll be invited to enter. These are for our online folks. Please click on the camera icon to go interactive. Provide your name, your affiliation to the district, your school community, your topic, and your contact information if you'd like a direct response to any questions you might have. This request is consistent with board protocol, and we appreciate your help. In the unusual event that someone is not willing to follow this protocol, we reserve the right to end that person's time. Again, each speaker will have two minutes to speak. When the timer goes off, your time is up. Please refrain from discussing any personnel items. After speaking, you will briefly see the welcome screen again as you transition back to the live stream meeting. Finally, we ask that your public commentary be respectful of all listeners. Thank you. Mr. Hoang, can you tell us how many speakers we have this evening?
Yes, I believe we have one speaker, Ruth DeBono. We are still waiting for her to accept the invitation.
So, while we wait on Ruth, Mr. Hoang, I'd just add that we typically don't respond in the meeting to our speakers. Sometimes that's because of time. Sometimes it's because there's some follow-up work that needs to happen prior to a response. But we do ask for people's contact information so that we can provide a timely response. If you, for some reason, haven't received a response from us and asked for one, I just ask that you contact the board office so that we can make sure you do receive one. Do we have our speaker, Ms. Hoang?
Yes, Mr. DeBono is, has accepted, and then next will be Eliza O'Keefe. So, go ahead, Ms. DeBono.
Hi, my name is Ruth DeBono. I am a senior at Walnut Hills High School, and I am part of the Young Activist Coalition. So, we did present on the Policy and Equity Committee earlier this week, and we, you know, everything to talk about data and all the, what we've been working on over, you know, the past probably 18 months. And we very, we very much appreciate that opportunity to meet and present on that board, and it's very important. Really, you know, with the new superintendent and everything you were talking about earlier with the Listening and Learning Session, Listening and Learning Sessions and the surveys, this is an opportunity the board has and the new superintendent has to really make CPS and the schools a place that truly values and protects its students and truly is, becomes an anti-racist place. And so, by implementing restorative justice, that's one way that that can be accomplished. And without doing that, you are not, there's no way that schools can be created in a way that truly value and foster growth for the students in our schools, because issues punitive discipline and exclusionary discipline policies contribute largely to the school-to-prison pipeline and are very harmful for all children, but especially Black and Brown children in our schools who are disproportionately affected by these policies. Additionally, restorative justice is not something that can really function to its full extent when SROs or school police are in our schools. And so, it's important that CPS as a district does what is needed to keep our students safe and protect our students in our schools by implementing restorative justice policies and removing police from our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Eliza O'Keefe, followed by CFT President Julie Sellers. Go ahead, Ms. O'Keefe.
Okay. Hi, I'm Eliza. I'm a junior at Walnut Hills High School, and I'm also here virtually with the Young Activist Coalition. As Ruth said last week, we met with the board's Policy and Equity Committee to share updated data and policy proposals for discipline reform within CPS. And again, we're very grateful for that opportunity, for the opportunity to have done that. So, I'm just here to reiterate that one of our goals is the dissolution of the contract with the police, because restorative justice cannot exist in a school environment while police officers remain in schools, even though SROs in some cases may act in a mentorship capacity to students. Their functional role in schools is the introduction of students to the criminal legal system. We would be better served with counselors, social workers, and mental health professionals as sources of emotional support. So, crucial to achieving restorative justice within CPS and discipline reform is the removal of police from Cincinnati Public Schools, the dissolution of the contract. The presence in schools is fundamentally at odds with the principles of restorative justice. We are working on setting a meeting with Superintendent Wright, and we're all hopeful that she'll prioritize this issue and help reform disciplinary practices within CPS. Since we've heard about some of the work she's done already, there's a real chance right now to make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I think that's our last online speaker. I think we may have one in-person speaker. Ms. Sellers.
There you go. Well, thank you, everyone, and I hope everyone's having a good last week of school. But what I really want to talk about this evening is, I know you are talking about transportation, and we had a transportation summit last week with students, and I think it was not as large of a turnout as we would have liked, but the room was full, and we got a lot of really good comments and feedback. But what I really want to talk about tonight is, you've already discussed for the kindergarten through eighth grade, transportation with yellow buses. I believe that Cincinnati Public Schools should get, start having a small fleet of buses so that our students can have access on time to field trips or sports if we have some yellow buses and some vans. I don't think that everybody is probably aware, but each bus for yellow buses costs $520 at least. That is just going from SCPA to the ballet, which is probably less than two miles away. If we had our own buses, then students would be able to partake in more opportunities for educational experiences, such as going to the ballet, the symphony performances. We got that grant for all of our students to go to the Holocaust Museum. But if we don't have transportation during the day, like every other school district in Ohio almost, our kids are further behind because they don't have those same opportunities. During other, when districts own their own school buses, they just call up and they say, "I need a bus at this time." But for teachers, they have to jump through so many hoops, it makes it really difficult to schedule a field trip, and at $520 a bus, that's at least $10 per student to ride that bus. Our kids can't always afford that. Sometimes we have some schools where they may have a foundation where they can get money. All of our schools don't have a foundation. And like Mike said at the last board meeting, he was at an event, and the CPS students came in really late because the bus got there late. I've had students and teachers who have had bus field trips scheduled, and somehow the bus never showed up to take them. And so, here as a teacher sitting with a class of students, expecting to go on a field trip and the bus never appears, and so, they are disappointed. And of course, they should be disappointed. That should not be something that kids should have to worry about, having the same types of educational experiences. With a fleet of, of buses and vans, we can use that for the bands, we can use it for all of the jazz club band, we can use it, I know, at SCPA, they have honor bands, and they go to different universities to compete, and those kids are the kids who are getting scholarships. The teachers have to rent a van, and it's really expensive for them to have to rent a van. And I'm sure there are other issues with making sure that that van is available. And so, I just want you to know that as you have those conversations, please think about the kids who are kindergarten through 12th grade, who are missing out on opportunities because they can't have the transportation to get to those events. We have that great grant with the Holocaust Museum for every ninth grader to be able to go to the museum for free, but they are not going to have the transportation to get there. So, if there's any questions about that, I can send more. I have a whole list of things of teachers who need transportation, but I left that list on my desk. So, any questions?
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
So, if we are good on Hearing of the Public and not missing anybody, we'll move on to Item D, which is approval of minutes for special meeting May 9th and business meeting May 9th. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
We'll move.
Thank you, Vice President Jones. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved as presented. We'll move to Item E, which are committee reports. Ms. Bolton, do you have a report from the Audit Committee?
Of course. Our great community audit committee meets and has a number of things to send to us regarding their minutes, and I'll go through those as quickly as I can and pay particular attention, board members, to the adjacent or attached actual audit reports regarding asset inventories and payroll follow-up. I'll do a couple of sentences about each of those, but I really would encourage you to read it, read both of those and see where we're going. Initially, the first effort was, presentation I should say, came from the Talent Department, and they presented updates regarding strategic planning, regarding personnel, and most significantly, talking in terms of the diversity and the planned three-year goal line, if you will, regarding increasing the diversity and increasing members of minorities as being a part of our total personnel complement. Then also, you'll see within the minutes, there's an entire presentation, slide presentation regarding the Asset Inventory Internal Audit Report, which is also summarized and attached at the back. We then had the internal auditor person, Ms. Roberts, present the initial plan for the next internal audit effort on her, by her, and the Audit Committee has participated in sending some suggestions. There's still some time to influence that plan, so be aware of that in the, in the minutes and how to do that. We also shared with the Audit Committee, and they discussed it, a transportation update. They've gotten very used to seeing Ms. Colano at virtually every audit meeting and appreciated it greatly for her service while she's been doing this. And also, shared with them the importance of the upcoming master agreement with the preschool Promise folks, and they gave us some ideas and thoughts. Also, they were encouraged by the fact that we were in the process of taking action regarding our levy renewal this coming November, and were very pleased to know that it was moving into a 10-year cycle and thought that that was a good plan. They also were pleased to know that the former interim superintendent was staying in the city and had the chief executive of another very important entity, so they were very pleased that that happened. But also, were very encouraged by the 100-day plan that we shared with them from Superintendent That's the major part of the minutes, but let me just say a couple of sentences about the asset inventory, something for all of us to kind of be aware of. Asset inventory audit was conducted, and we did find, the committee, but staff, had some concerns about certain aspects of the assets not necessarily matching some of the information that has been kept and the records that have been maintained. So, the internal audit team recommends management perform a full reconciliation between the inventory count data and the business plus asset data. It's very important, and that was submitted. The other one that is a full report audit, and that is with the payroll follow-up, which has taken a significant amount of time. The results of this project indicate the payroll processes and corresponding financial systems are functioning properly and that they are accurately computing payroll based on system setup and user inputs. However, through this process, overtime became the predominant focus of the follow-up audit due to the internal audit identification of high trends and use of overtime and the extent of the use of overtime. So, those were things that they were working on and advising that the administration take heed and develop further information and action. I submit and hope for approval.
Thank you. Ms. Bolton, do we have any questions about the Audit Committee report? I have one. Is there any recommendation for board action coming from this committee this month?
No, just that the public be aware of that situation, since it's a public audit, and we'd like to share that information, and that then now we know that the administration will be taking action based upon that audit, but the audit needed to be shared. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll turn now to Vice President Jones for a committee report from the Student Achievement Committee.
President, I would like to present for board consideration the minutes from the Student Achievement and District Instructional Performance Committee that was held on May 6th. I'll go through it pretty quickly. Most of them were updates. So, the science curriculum provided an update. The curriculum had been, had been approved by the board, I believe it was in February. So, what we got is just a status report on where things were in terms of implementing the curriculum and some of the areas or the next steps that the Science Department was planning on pursuing. And it is our hope, that, it is not our hope, but the plan, is that they will come back to the committee with more information that might include data that shows even more specific measures about how they're measuring success. The next presentation was on student services with disabilities. Again, they had also already done a presentation to the full board, but it was very interesting to get an update on how they're approaching the areas where we're working with kids who are English language learners and also students with disabilities. We looked at some of the enrollment data for students with disabilities, and it's included in the report that, where people can see some of those numbers. And again, the committee was asked to provide specific information and an update on the disproportionality of students with disabilities at a future committee meeting, and this data will include demographics across all areas, such as boys, girls, ethnicity, and what have you. So, we want to do a more comprehensive look at that. And the report, all of these reports are on file in the board office, I might add. We had another report on College Credit Plus, just for the public's information. College Credit Plus is Ohio's dual enrollment program that provides students in grade seven to 12th the opportunity to earn college and high school credits at the same time. So, they take courses from local Ohio, or from Ohio colleges and universities. And, you know, that, the focus of that is to really help enhance our students' preparedness for college-level work and to give them a jump on their college careers and helping them to succeed with their college courses. Ms. Maroney was the presenter of that committee and gave us a full presentation on some of the problems in working with the College Credit Plus programs, the impact of dual enrollment, participation snapshots, things like that. But again, we want them to come back with some baseline data on variables that result in some of the gaps and where there are areas of growth within the program, College Credit Plus. I will say that one of our board members, member Weinberg, asked a very important question, which I'll share, about easy, how to find the information on our website, to make it very, her suggestion was to make it easy for parents to find the information about the dual enrollment college credit program. So, I wanted to make sure I made that point. The next update was on the implementation of our anti-racism and equity policy. It was pretty general because our diversity manager, former diversity manager is no longer there. And so, Assistant Superintendent Murphy provided just a brief update on that, shared with us around the work of the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee, including training that's being done, some of the things that are being done in the schools. And again, we're asking for another update that would provide some baseline data for us if we need that in approximately six months. And then finally, well, not finally, we have two more very short items. The school calendars, we updated that. Mr. McDowell came and presented the calendars for approval, the calendars for 2022, '23, 2023, '24, and 2024, '25. As I understand it, the calendars have gone through approval with the calendar committee, and Superintendent Wright has also reviewed them. So, it came to the student achievement with final recommendation being made to the board, and I believe that it is being considered in the superintendent's report. Then the final item was School Board School Pitch Night. And for those of you who don't know what that is, School Board School is a nonprofit program that works with individuals who are interested in learning more about governance and school board policy, and the goal is to have individuals who participate in that consider running for either school board or another public office. And so, there were four members of, either two members from the board And so, there were four members of, either two members from the board and two from administration that attended Pitch Night, and we were assigned, so to speak, we were supposed to get two tabs, but we ended up with four, right, Mr. Marowski? And so, three of those came under Student Achievement. And just to give you an update, one was a request made by a young man, a student from SCPA who had a question about the dress code. One was an update on School Finder, and School Finder, the request was to simplify our website so that people could really go, find a simple way to go to our website to get information about schools and what happens in those schools and help parents to be able to make good choices when they're trying to identify where to send their kids to school. And so, Ms. Murphy informed us and reminded us actually that our website was being updated and that that was being incorporated as part of that. So, we're hoping that, for great success with that, and we look forward to seeing that. The other area that we addressed was the tool called DARE, which is currently being used by the the dance equality. And I don't know, oh, Mr. Marowski just left. I don't know if this is the same tool that he was working on in the policy committee, but it's another effort of School Board School. I don't have any more information on that. I apologize for that. But anyway, there was no other business, but I did want to highlight that Kendra Phelps was our only public speaker, and she spoke and commented on the helpful information that was presented during the committee meeting. She talked about particularly the science curriculum and the collaborative nature in which the administrators and the teachers and people who are involved in that process worked together and expressed her pleasure about that. So, we want to give kudos to those managers and directors and all the individuals who participated in the development of the curriculum. So, I submit the minutes as written.
Thank you, Vice President Jones. Do we have any questions about the Student Achievement Committee report? I have just the same one. I asked the audit committee, Ms. Jones, it sounds like there's one recommendation for action that's around calendars that will be coming through the superintendent's report. Is there anything else that the committee is referring to the board for action tonight?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. I need a motion to accept the committee reports.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The committee reports are approved as presented. Thank you very much. We'll move now to the next item on our agenda, which is going to be the first presentation, I believe, from our treasurer.
I am pleased tonight to present to you a very modified executive version of the five-year forecast. The full detailed presentation was conducted in Finance Committee by our Assistant Treasurer, Kim Hughes, and our Director of Financial Transparency, Kevin Ashley. And so, if I get the right one here. Got it? Okay, you're gonna have to flip slides for me. Okay, so, all 613 school districts in the state of Ohio have to file a general fund cash forecast twice a year, once in November and an update in May. It follows a standard format that the Higher Department of Education creates, and the purpose of the forecast is for the public and the ODE and the board to monitor district solvency and then look into the future to help plan for trends and revenue generating ideas. So, factors that influence the forecast each year is, of course, the changes in the state funding formula. If you know that we, the state has a budget, so every two years, things adjust, makes it hard to predict things five years into the future. Of course, we have inflationary rates that we use to forecast certain expenditures. And then we have, of course, we have our cliff plan, that's expenses coming back to the general fund from ESER and the Student Wellness Fund, and then the impact of student enrollment and collective bargaining agreements. So, it's all about cash. So, school districts in the state of Ohio operate on a cash basis, so any timing differences of cash collections or cash payments has an influence. The key is, in the five-year forecast, which you have a blown-up copy in front of you, for those of us who have eyes over 50, I need a bigger picture, but the first three years on the forecast represents actual spending, then the current year, and in May, it's our prediction of how we're gonna finish this year. Fiscal year '23 is aligning to the version of where we are with the budget, and then we forecast moving forward based on trends. One of the guidance that we follow from the board is that not to allow for new levies in that three-year window. And the, I failed to mention that Ohio Department of Education requires us to show positive cash in that three-year window, which is the current year and the two following ones. Otherwise, they concern, consider us a risk, and then they start coming down and offering guidance on how to close our spending gap. So, other key factors in order to maintain positive cash flow is to make sure that our renewals are passing and that they, that Ohio fully funds the state funding formula because they created a six-year phase in, which in a few slides, I'll show you the impact of the district, and that we must control our expenses. So, as long as our revenues are growing faster than our revenues, then we're gonna dip into our cash balance, and we'll be forced to go back for new money unless we change our patterns. And then monitoring expenses that are coming back to the general fund from ESER. Next slide. So, focusing on the state funding formula, you've seen this slide before, just reminding you that there were some changes, a big change that you're gonna see in some of the trend data, comparative data, is that we no longer have pass-through funding, which means we were receiving revenues for students who were being educated in the Ed Choice Factor Schools or community schools or any of the other two scholar, Autism and Peterson scholarships, that receive revenues for those students, and then we turn around and deduct off tuition. Our revenue went down and our expenses went down, and it's, it will become very apparent when I get to the bar charts. Also, in the funding formula that's different is that they establish a base cost of educating one child, and then they, based on your grade level projections or enrollment, they determine what kind of staff you need, and they multiply it times an average teacher salary, which our salary is higher, so that hurts us in that respect. But they did increase funding for categorical funding, and so you'll see that our categorical funding lines will go up. But they also have put in restrictions on that funding, so we're gonna have to report out how we spent that money on students with disabilities, how we spend it against, supporting English language learners, and et cetera. Okay, so, next slide. Another increase, another change to the district is that we got richer, as we're considered a wealthy district in the state of Ohio because of our property wealth. Our state share for last year was at 46%, this year it's dropped to 43%, and that's the impact of removing all those students that we don't educate. So, when they focused just on the students that we educate, we became richer relative to the rest of the state. Comparatively speaking, Cleveland receives over 70% of their funds from the state, so their local taxpayers don't have to fund as much. In fact, all urban cities are a higher state share than we do except for Columbus. The next change that was significant, no, no, go back, thank you. The next change that was significant to the formula was they took the student wellness funding that Governor Dewine established in a separate state grant, and they put that inside the formula, and so it's now subject to state share. So, instead of getting $12.5 million like we did last year, we get $3.5 million or 3.2 million this year. So, instead of getting a full dollar value, we're only getting 43 cents on the dollar based on our calculation. And then I already mentioned that they're phasing in the formula, so as they phased in, we would have received this year 49 million more if they had fully funded the formula this year, and next year 39 million, so combined two-year total of $88 million that we would have received if they were able to fund the full formula. So, here's a graphical depiction of the pass-through funding. So, the bronze-colored bar chart, the higher one, represents how we used to get funded for all the district students, residents that attend either CPS or one of the voucher schools, one of the community schools. This does not include non-public, non-voucher students. We have about 9,000 students in the city that attend non-public. Now, the lighter, the darker green bar chart shows you without the pass-through kids, and so these are just the students that are, comparatively speaking, that are educated in the district, but does not include regular ed preschool. This is just preschool disabilities and K-12. Next slide. So, this shows you how that's impacting our forecast on the revenue side. So, as you can see, we have this little dip between '20 and '21 that represents the COVID impact with students withdrawing from the district. And then we've started to recover that. In November, we thought we were gonna recover a little bit faster than we are, so we've adjusted that formula. So, the light blue bar chart, or the line, I'm sorry, that goes up was our original November forecast, and then we've modified it so to be a little bit flatter growth. We're still growing and it's still recovering. We're about 98% of where we were pre-COVID, K to 12, and so that's excellent, but it was just having an impact. The new formula, the students that they're educating is either the, your last year of enrollment or the three-year average, whichever one is higher. And so, because most districts in the state of Ohio dropped during COVID, we're all on the three-year average. Okay, next slide. So, this is a visual depiction of how the state share happens. So, our base cost for, to educate a regular ed child is $7,233, but the state's only kicking in $3,100. And so, our local taxes, our, our local taxpayers are responsible for funding the other half of the other 56%. Next slide. Here's a forecast of the first three, the first three bar charts are actual revenues, and you can see the dip between '21 and '22. That represents the change in that pass-through funding. So, our revenues went down because we're not receiving those, the revenues are going straight to those schools instead of to us, pass-through. So, '22 is our forecast for the current year, and we're just about done, and we're receiving as, as expected, we're right on target. A little tiny increase next year, and then the light blue lines, the bars at the top are represent the revenue, or I'm sorry, the levy that's coming up for renewal this November. And so, it shows you that the first year in '24, it's a half a year because tech, levies are on a calendar year basis and we operate on a fiscal year basis, so the, if that were not to pass, that first year would be lose $25 million, and then going forward. And we do have a levy coming up in '25, it's the $48 million levy, but that doesn't have an influence in this window forecast, it hits us in the '26, '27 school year. Okay, next slide. This is also another picture of that drop in revenue based on the state, the elimination of pass-through funding. But it also shows you moving forward, are, the purple represents the unrestricted part of the formula, so just general operations, and the orange represents restricted funding. Those are the categorical fundings I talked about in previous slide, as you can see that that's growing as time goes on. On the opposite side of the equation, we have expenditures, so you also see a drop between '21 and '22 because of the pass-through funding, we no longer have to pay that tuition, and it's about $80 million a year that we will, don't have to pay anymore, but we're also not receiving that revenue. This year, we are underspending our budget target, and so next year, we're predicting fiscal year '23 represents going back up to our normal level of spending. And then in between '24 and '25, you see an increase, and that represents the back end of the cliff from ESER, so all of, all those things that are gonna come back to the general fund. Next slide. So, for fiscal year '23, we showed that we were going to bring $6.2 million back to the general fund, and these are the line items. This year, we decided to delay the Promise Center coming back into the general fund, so we're gonna fund it at ESER one more time. Next slide. So, we're ended with about $4 million coming back to the general fund from ESER for this year. Next slide. So, here's a summary. I really like this slide because it shows you the dark bar represents our revenue, the gray bar represents our expenses, and the yellow line represents our cash balance. So, as long as our expenses are below our cat, our below our revenues, our cash will build. But as our expenses start to trend upward, and sometimes you have to, like in the first year of the strategic plan, we typically deliberately invested in that first year, so our expenses were higher than our revenues. But if you look at fiscal year '23, we're still a little bit higher, but we maintain a positive cash balance through '24, barring any pandemics, new pandemics. So, we do fit that three-year window requirement, and we're submitting the forecast for approval tonight. We have a requirement to file it by ODE by May 31st. I think that's the last slide. Is there anything else? There you go, with questions.
Thank you, Tricia Wagner.
Of course.
We're gonna be hearing more from you very shortly
Yes.
About our proposed budget planning for next year. So, I think if, there may be questions that come then too, but are there questions people have now just about the forecast? Ms. Jones?
Yeah, I, I'm curious, on the slide where you showed us the base cost per pupil, like what we get from the state, you made a comment about how much of that, what percentage of that pays for charter community? Was it that?
So, that's not part of the formula anymore. What I was trying to explain is, when you look at the bar charts, when you look at, the pass-through funding in the formula went away, but, so when you look at our history versus our future, the revenues look like they dropped, and if, without explanation of the change in the formula, it looks like we lost a lot of revenue, and we really didn't.
Okay, and, and so my question, that, that was a good clarification, and my question was, I remember when the district and your department was very actively involved in trying to hold, I don't know if it's the state or the community charters accountable for lost dollars because kids weren't showing up and they were still charging us and that kind of thing. Just curious to know where that is? Are we still doing that? And what does that look like? I mean, from a
So, the fund, it goes directly to those charter schools instead of to us, so we don't have to fight over those funding, that funding anymore, although I believe they're still registering with us for, for transportation and special needs services.
Yeah, so we're, we're a pass-through, so we don't even see the money, right?
Right, we used to be a pass-through, we're not a pass-through anymore.
We're not, okay, thank you.
Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, thanks for the presentation, appreciate it. Jen, the, we have to do this in the fall, and we have to do it in the spring, and, and of course have to pass it this evening. One question, what, what, what influences did you have between, let's say, the fall version and this spring version?
So, the biggest changes between November and May was the reduction in enrollment when we were over, we were forecasting that we would grow back too fast, and so we've adjusted that downward. And then the, oh, and then the transportation fine is a deduct off of our revenue, so that was 2.4 million is a reduction of revenue, we had to make that adjustment. We did not forecast for another one next year or future years. The other, on the expense side, we just went, we went and looked at how much have we paid and what's encumbered and what we think's gonna pay out from the expenses, and so we are, our salaries are down mostly because we have a lot of vacancies, we had a hard time filling positions, so we had a savings and salaries and related benefits.
Thanks, those are all big things, good scene.
Yes.
And then also, the, the cash balance piece from this particular fiscal year, '22 to fiscal '23 seems rather abrupt, a lot, a lot of difference. Is that, is, am I reading that correctly on cash balance, June 30?
So, in the three-year window, in November, in the third year, we, we forecasted that we would have about $11 million at the end of that three-year, and now we're at nine, so we're close, but the bringing money, bringing the cliff back in, and then the revenue not going as fast as we thought because we didn't know about, student wellness money not being included, and, you know, in November, there were still a lot of issues, and ODE is still tweaking the formula to make it as accurate as they can. We learned of a change in the, two changes just on Thursday, don't, they don't really impact this forecast, but one of them is that the average wide, what they call DPIA now, which is now, is the economically disadvantaged, the average wide number wide numbers have declined. Because people are remote, parents aren't filling out the documents like they used to. And so just overall, we know that's not true, but just the data doesn't support that. And so they see that's going to be a reduction to school districts. Next year, it's only going to impact us about $200,000 because it's only 14, that part of the formula is being phased in at 14%. So it's not going to have a negative impact on us. But there should, there's a, most of the districts are doing a big push to try to get their disadvantaged students identified and reported properly. The other change in the formula is they're taking the catastrophic costs out of the top partial of the base guarantee and they're putting it down. So that will help us by about $2 million. And that's included in the forecast, but that won't happen until next year. And so they're just tweaking and tweaking and tweaking. And so it, it changes the formula on us. And as we clean up data and correct data reporting errors, that changes too. So it's becomes an interesting challenge.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll then move right into our next presentation, also from our treasurer on budgeting for next year.
So it's a good feed in to the budget update. So we start our budget process in, in October, November timeframe when we take our extra, enrollment extract. And keep in mind, I can't remember if I said this earlier or not, but we fund for head count. So we have 36,500 kids. The state only funds us for proportional enrollment. So if a child comes in in November and leaves in May, we only get that, those many days or hours of instruction funded. We don't, even though we have to hire a teacher to teach that child, we don't get full funding for them. And so that's the difference between how we have to fund a child versus them. So we are focusing on the equitable distribution of income, I'm sorry, funds and budgeting. And we've come with some new methods. And so we're in the baby steps of that, but we're trying to follow the board policy that's referenced there on the slide. And it was also called out in the strategic plan and their student-centered decision-making. And so we're trying to focus our dollars on how we serve students best. Next slide. So we set the annual budget target based on the forecast that we just looked at, but we typically use the November forecast since we start budgeting in October and November. And so given the information that we knew, we set the target at, next slide, 609 million, which was flat from this year. So this year's budget was 609, and we thought at best we had to hold a line in order to keep that positive cash balance throughout the next three years. Next slide. The challenges, it's been kind of a crazy couple of years in terms of building a budget, but you know, COVID. Lake has spending patterns. There's supply chain delays. We have increase in pricing. We had the state funding formula change. We're kind of in between strategic plans. We had the last one, the last, the third year is this year, and then we haven't quite started building the new one yet. And the change in the budget redesign, we have now eliminated, or we will be next year, eliminate the school-wide pool. And that'll show you on the forecast, you'll see between the current year and next year, there's the, the big dollar changes between the transfer line and all the other allocations. It just made it, having the school-wide pool, which allows you to co-mingle your general fund with your federal funds, whoever you identify is putting into the pool, makes it really hard to do equity funding. We also have the cliff impact coming back to the district. We had onboard a new superintendent and it took us not long for her to, to understand and catch up and participate, but it did take us a little bit of time. And then we, of course, have a levy that's coming up. And so that will have an influence on the budget going forward. So we're focusing on, as a budget, we create a budget, we focus on that three-year window with fifth circles in order, we can't let the budget grow so fast that we dip into that negative cash balance in the third year. Next slide. So in November, the guidance was because we were holding the line flat, any new stuff had to come out of old stuff spending, right? So immediately, we had our step increases and the collective bargaining agreement, COLA increases that represented in the general fund about $70 million with related benefits. We had planned on $6.2 million coming back from the, from ESER. We call it the cliff. We had $2.5 million that was sitting in the student wellness grant that we thought were going to come back to the general fund. We actually shifted that over to ESER. If you take out our district fixed expenses, which is our debt payments and the fees that we pay to the county auditor for collecting our property taxes for us, and our insurance, liability insurance, things that don't change. And we'd anticipated funding a centralized enrollment in a strategic plan. It left us $549 million to allocate to everything else, which meant that we would have, needed across the board, a 10% cut in budgets. And so we, that's how we started off. Everybody had to cut 10% in order to fund these other things. Next slide. Like, oops. That's okay. Okay, next slide. There you go. Okay, so this is the picture of the cliff. It just kind of reminding me that ESER money, while it was big, doesn't last. And we have a small window of time to spend it. And we can't sustain necessarily the things that are in there. So that represents, that's the yellow bump up there, and that is going to hit us pretty hard between '24 and '25. Next slide. So this is the $6.2 million that we anticipated coming back from the cliff, from ESER. So we've been phasing in, we, when we first entered the pandemic, we decided we needed a crisis communicator. And so we'll put that in ESER funds, but knew that we'd have to phase that back. And so 25% of that salary is coming back to the general fund every year. We, we incurred a very large increase in our liability insurance premiums and some general counsel expenses. And so last year, we put that increase into ESER and announced back in the general fund. And as I stated before, we decided to leave the Promise Center into ESER one more year. We also use ESER to help us return to normal athletics and extracurricular activities. So about $1.8 million that we had in ESER to help us restore back this sports and in clubs is coming back to the general fund in '23. And then we restored, I think it's 10 district-wide mentors, 10 or 12 district-wide mentors. So instead of $6.2 million coming back, it's going to be $4 million coming back for this year. That just kicks that can a little bit down the road. Next slide. So this is how we used it. And when we finish this year and we finish out the ESER two grant is when we're going to show you the financial impact tool. We want to make sure we capture the right expenses. But there's a nurse in every, there's a budgeted nurse in every building. We had a lot of vacancies. We had 163 building aside substitutes, so they weren't crossing from building to building and sharing germs. We hired 45 primary reading specialists. 185 health and safety paraprofessionals. A lot of protective equipment and cleaning supplies. $15 million for summer scholars last year. One-to-one device for every student and teacher and facility upgrades. We improved some ventilation systems and we are paying for the Walnut Hills Dome out of this funds. And then we also use it to help return to normal operations relative to evidence-based curriculum. There are $9 million of transportation and the athletics and extracurricular I mentioned. So everything has to, you can't just fund like strategic items out of ESER. It has to be related to COVID to support one of those four items. Response to COVID, preventing learning loss, supporting remote learning, and you all remember the bridge conversations, and then business continuity. Go ahead. So ESER two, this data is as effective of April 30th to 2020, so as a month end close of April. So ESER two was $93 million. And we, we've almost spent it all and it will be done in, by the end of June. So it is a multi-year budget. We have until September 23 to spend it out, but we'll get there, like I said, in June. So we've, as of April, we've spent $64 million. We have another $23 million encumbered for a total of $87 million. And then we have some payroll that's already committed to pay out through June. So that'll leave us with about $2 million. And what we'll do is we'll take money out of ESER three to finish off ESER two, and then we'll be done with it. Next slide. So ESER three, we started spending that this year and we've already spent $4 million of it. And then the asterisk, I wanted to point out, the physical distancing, that $9.3 million represents a $6.8 for Walnut Hills and then the pre-design work for Hyde Park and Puzzlet Ridge. And then the double asterisk represents the addition of summer scholars of $19 million for this summer that we're getting ready to kick off. And then we're going to be making some changes in tech payments to make sure we finish off ESER two. So having said that, we anticipate having an available balance of about $175 million out of the $208 million that we have until September of '24 to spend down. So next slide. So for next year's budget, as we're going through revisions and things are changing every day, so these aren't final yet, we're anticipating about $114 million spend next year. And if that's the case, then we'll be left with $80 million to spend in fiscal year '24. And so we're, we're pretty close to where we were in that three-year plan that you adopted in August. As line items have changed, we've found other things to help fund. And so as we refine these and finish out the general fund, we'll come back with more details. Next slide. So now we're going to switch to the general fund. How are we in our progress? Next slide. So our target once again is 609 million. As of last Monday, I get an extract every Monday at this point, we're at 635 million. So it left us with a $26 million gap. We've already identified at least five and a half, so we're down to 20 million as of today. I haven't, I haven't looked at the target, the extract yet today, but we're continuing to work through it. Next slide. These are the things we're focusing on. Oh, this is what we're investing on. So you had asked me at finance committee to talk about what are we investing, expanding? And we've adopted a science and world language curriculum. We've elevating the diversity, equity, and inclusion function to the cabinet level. We're continuing to fund the first grade reading specialists, expanding student and technology as digital learning continues to expand. We've absorbed the resource coordination came from the student wellness, about $4.2 million in contracts. We've expanded school social workers, so we're up to 81 in the budget right now. So there's one in, a full-time in every, at least a full-time in every building. And we've expanded counselors. I think we added five more counselors this year. And then of course, expanding our English language learner teachers that is compliant with the collective bargaining agreement. Next slide. So in a previous presentation, we talked about the tiers. And so tier zero, just to remind you, I won't go into details, but represents everything that's district fix. So our debt payments, the Fund 34 transfer that we were required to by the facility master plan, put $3.4 million every year into a separate maintenance fund to maintain those beautiful FMP buildings, our liability insurance, payments to the county auditors and audit fees. And then tier one represents everything that the state and federal requires us to spend money on to educate our children. One and a half, because we had a debate on whether transportation, part of it is state and federal required, right? For K-8 eligible students, we choose to do 912, so we, we agree to settle it as its own half-tier. And then tier two was anything on top of that that is required by our collective bargaining agreement that goes above and beyond state and federal law. And then what's left over? I really want to show that the, the money that's left over for us to do new and innovative things is not as big as people might think it is. And so we, we've identified all the positions by tier. The difficulty now is doing the non-personnel line items, for example, electricity. Now, how do you allocate that up amongst the tiers? So we're working through that. And so I'm working to provide this information in a future presentation. Next slide. So the work that we're getting ready to finish is the, the $5.5 million was a, the duplication that was in Department of Student Services that we've identified and removed. We have the possibility of reducing our sick leave pool budget line item because the super subs that we have out there is helping to cover, and we're not having to hire as many long-term subs to cover for maturity leaves and long-term illnesses. And so we think we can reduce some of that budget. We're considering freezing vacant positions and at least going through an additional review to make sure that we don't fund things that weren't, not part of the strategic direction. We are looking at every line item to see if we can fund it to another source out of the general fund. And then we're looking at superintendent's working on her reorganization plan. We have put together some analysis today to look at overtime, travel, and the vendor contracts. This is interesting. We have one vendor, we have 33 different budget sites that contract individually with this one vendor. And so there's an opportunity to see if we can get some savings there. Next slide. So we're working through the financial impact tool as we move forward and determine what we might shave down or reduce or delay. And we're focusing on first on the big, the big spends, summer scholars, transportation, technology, and resource coordination and curriculum. And then as we get through that, we'll get, take on the next level. And so changing our thinking to measurable outcomes against these initiatives has been very valuable, interesting conversations, but we're, we're definitely committed and we're moving forward. And we'll, we'll share the results of those at the next presentation. Next slide. So we heard loud and clear that we want to engage our public. And so we did offer our first town hall. Next one. On May 3rd, if I can have my date right. Got some great feedback. It was a lot of fun. And at the end of that, superintendent provided a survey. And then she's going to kind of share the results of the survey as of Friday night, right? Chair?
So as, as you know, we have a survey that we have out around overall engagement. And as a follow-up to that survey, we added a question around budget priorities. So every person that takes the survey has the option to take the survey around budget priorities. And so this is the way that the survey responses have come right now in terms of prioritizing what you would like to see done with the budget. And from, and that started the, on the 3rd, it's still open now. So anyone that takes the survey, they still have an opportunity to do that, but this is as of last week. And so as we look at that from the respondents, and we have about 100 respondents to just this part of the survey. So we have a lot of, of responses from the other part, but this one was specific to budget and about 100 people have responded to that. And so the breakdown really showed that in terms of priority, the top level priority was around mental health and mental health supports. From there, it was employment support. And then at the other end, it was sports and extracurriculars, credit recovery, and foreign world, foreign and world language expansion. So those, we pulled out from the current budget items, kind of categorized those things together based on conversation with our treasurer. And that's how they were given the breakdown for each of those areas. So we will have more of that to share. There will likely be an update to this particular slide for Monday's engagement session, but this is where we were as of last week.
Thank you, Superintendent Wright. So next slide. We're going to use this information in our next steps. We do have another town hall scheduled for May 31st, and that's going to talk about the expense side of the equation, 5:00 to 6:00 PM. And so we would love to have even more people participate this time. So we're going through our budget reviews. We're looking, using the public feedback that we've been receiving, looking at the financial impact tool and consolidation of contracts and, and contract reviews to see if we are getting the bang for our buck and whether we want to continue investing in those. We plan to come back on June 13th and June 22nd, and then ask for board adoption on the 27th. I hope never have to do another 90-day appropriation again. And so we're making some good progress. Now that we've gone through and received, you know, refined the accuracy of what's been loaded into the budget, we can start focusing on the, what we want to prioritize in our spending. And so, next slide. So just so you know, these are the things we're coming. Next time, we're going to come back with a staffing analysis so you can see specifically positions that have grown or reduced, the budget by tier, and the, the results of the funding impact and how we're going to prioritize. And then a recommendation of cost items to review, to reduce, or your review. And we'll be using the community feedback and then the, the tool in order to help make those decisions. So I think that was it. I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Treasurer Wagner. Do board members have questions about her presentation or the budget? Dr. Moffett.
I have a question that someone asked me, and I really don't know the answer to, but I know you do. So, do we get extra money for Title I students? How does that work? How does that impact our budget?
We do. We get around $22 million a year for Title I students, and that represents from economically disadvantaged students to help them supplement what we do in the general fund. And so that's a completely separate grant. We have 42 different state and federal grants that we manage, around $80 million, outside of ESER, around $80 million a year, and Title I is one of those grants. And so Title II A represents improving teacher quality, so we use that money to help professional development on teachers. Idea B represents about $11 million a year to support students with disabilities. So there are very specific rules about how to spend that money. But, and I forget now how many titles, we have 65 schools, and I think all but 12 are title-eligible. I mean, don't quote me on that number, I forget.
I got you. And I just have one, more, two more questions. So, well, one question, a statement. So the Promise Center, we put that in ESER funds for the next year, but then that, do we have the ability to fund that beyond that?
That's part of the cliff. Yeah, it's a good question. So during COVID, we didn't need the Promise Center because we weren't in school, and so we eliminated it from the budget. So this, this current year, we put it in ESER as a continuity restoration. And because on February 28th, our budget gap was $50 million, which some of it was just duplicative or mistakes that we fixed, as we were identifying things, one of the things, so one of the recommendations was just to leave it there one more year and then try to bring it back in the following year while we try to fund other things.
And then my statement was, with respect to the slide that you and Superintendent Wright shared regarding the feedback from the community, I noted that they said career education, 45.7%. Is this, am I reading this right? They wanted us to put money towards career education for our students.
Mm-hmm. So in the state funding formula, it's one of the categoricals, career tech spending, and so that, that's always been in the restricted side of the formula, and it continues to be, but it is also growing. And I know we added career tech teachers to next year's budget, I can't remember the exact amount, but that'll be in the FTE analysis that we do for you.
Yes. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Dr. Moffett. Do we have other board member questions? Ms. Bolton?
Thanks, and thanks for the work, Jen. This is so important. Just a couple of questions. Where might be any reference to facilities? Where would we find that, whether it's ESER money or whether it's general fund money? I feel very strongly that we're eventually going to need to spend some significant dollars even beyond what we're doing now. And I know we're not that interested, nor is the public, in any kind of bond issue to do that. And so where does this fit in for either ESER or general fund?
So the answer is all the above. So the-
Okay. I can take that, I like that. That's a good answer.
So the general fund supports the facilities department and minor repairs and, you know, continuity custodians and the building engineers. The maintenance funds, which is Fund 34, the general fund sends $3.4 million every year into that maintenance fund to maintain roofs and plumbing and HVA systems, okay? In terms of building improvements, the, there's some money in ESER. So we did the Walnut Hills Dome, the expansion of Hyde Park, the Spanish Pleasant Ridge, and then there was money in there for the expansion of Walnut Hills. Anything beyond that, we would have to consider borrowing or doing a bond levy.
So, so the commitment regarding facilities, we're still looking at saying that 13 million will go for expanding Walnut?
Yes, I think. Yes.
Okay.
It's still there, but it's in '24.
So it wouldn't be this fiscal year '23 coming up, it would be '24?
So in the, in the new replacement year plan, you're going to see Hyde Park and Pleasant Ridge split into two years because originally I had it in one year, but that's not realistic. So half of the, and the construction costs have gone up dramatically.
Yeah.
Right? And so we're trying to accommodate that increase in construction for those two projects while maintaining enough there to support the Walnut Hills expansion in the following year. So they'll start designing, if the board adopts a project, they, they'll start designing it this year in '23 while they're building Hyde Park and Pleasant Ridge in '23 and '24. Does that make sense? Is Courtney in? Am I right?
Ms. Bolton, does that answer your question?
She turned to ask somebody.
Well, yeah, I think I'm right. I asked her if I was right.
Okay, good. Just to, I think, one more or two more. As you're saying, for fiscal '24, there'll be 80 million ESER dollars?
As of today, in the draft, yes. As we continue to refine the three-year plan or the two years that are left, that could move more in the one year or more into the other year. It depends on how we finish it out.
And then in that coming year, this year, we're planning this budget, how many ESER dollars are we spending in '23? I think you mentioned-
We were in the plan 111, and now it's at 114.
That's okay. So last one, Promise, the vacancy piece, which is a hot item. Truly, how many vacancies exist district-wide?
Right now, I don't know. I don't, off the top of my head, I don't know. Couple hundred.
Two hundred? Thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple, but any other board members before? I'll just, these are just some pieces of positive feedback and gratitude for all of this. I think for, from my perspective, it's great to see not only a sound plan that we're going to be in the black against our five-year forecast in a responsible, forward-looking way, but also that there's such an effort you all are making as we make decisions to make that based on an analysis of what's making a difference for kids. So lots of ways to cut or grow, how do you decide that? Well, what's having a bigger return and a bigger impact for children? And so I'm excited to see the numbers and the pieces that come with the financial impact tool, but I think that's great, and I want to say thank you. And then the last piece of, I think, just encouraging news here, and I want people to correct me if I'm wrong on all this, but our new superintendent has had a really meaningful opportunity to engage as a part of this process. And I think it's challenging to come into a new district under any circumstances, but I think to chat, come in and be so engaged with where has our spending been, where could it go in the future, is really fantastic. And so I appreciate the joint effort I think the two of you are making so that we can set some goals for next year and really make a difference and leverage the full power of all the hundreds of millions of dollars we have to make the biggest difference possible for children. Is any of that wrong?
It's not wrong.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So then, Treasurer, we'll say thank you to you, and we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the resolutions. And I believe we have a first resolution from Dr. Moffett.
I submit a resolution approving additional students' eligibility for a subsidy, which is just reimbursement in lieu of transportation for the 2021-2022 school year. I submit it as written.
Thank you, Dr. Moffett. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions of the resolution? Okay. Ms. Wagner.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
I didn't hear it. What was it? The resolution? Sorry.
It says for students eligible for the subsidy, transportation subsidy.
Yes.
And President Lindy?
Yes, welcome back. Mrs. Weinberg was at the SCPA graduation, which we announced at the beginning, and welcome back. We have a second resolution tonight that I believe is going to be from Ms. Bolton.
Yes, and I'll probably ask the Treasurer to just explain it a bit. The title is longer than a novel. So the resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies, certifying them to the county auditor. I submit and hope for approval and would like a second somewhere.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Any discussion or questions?
If the Treasurer could explain it, that would be great.
Absolutely, happy to. So this, the Hamilton County Auditor is responsible for creating property tax bills, and they do that based on the millage rate, which is what the voters approve. A mill is one one-thousandth of a dollar, and so he goes through and looks at the property valuation and comes up with our fixed sum levies, gets to determine what's the right millage rate or the property tax rate in order to generate the revenues that the voters approved. And so they go through that once a year, calculate the, sometimes the millage changes based on valuations and the pool of payers, and so every year you have to adopt and agree based on my recommendation that there, we agree with those rates.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Wagner, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes, thank you. We're going to move now to the Superintendent of Schools, item H, and we're going to hear from Mrs. Weinberg on our retirements.
All right. I have two certificated personnel that I would like to announce in terms of for retirement. First up is Rebecca A. Jansen McKinnis, a teacher at SCPA. We have Kathy M. Seamer, a teacher at RISD Price. And then we have for civil service personnel for retirement, we have several names. Kimberly, I think it's Day, she's a paraprofessional. Tanya Ferguson, a food service helper. Melody Finch, a licensed practical nurse. Keith G. Fisher, a building engineer at Akin. Judith Miller, a senior support specialist. Sandra Romero, a senior support specialist. And last but not least, we have Janet Teskey, a paraprofessional. We would like to thank them for all of their service to the Cincinnati Public Schools and to, of course, the children, and we wish them well in their endeavors.
Thank you, Mrs. Weinberg. I need a motion to accept the recommendations of the superintendent, please.
No moves.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Weinberg. Any discussion or questions on the recommendations of the superintendent? Ms. Bolton?
Yes, again, as I've said in before, and in committee, I guess, actually, it's been in two committees, I think everything needs to be reconsidered regarding the 2004, is it right, 2020? How, I'm trying to get the right number. The second calendar we're about to adopt, not for this coming year or the next year, but the following year, I would think that we should try to not pass that at this time, pass the other ones, and not pass that one because it is outside all six bargaining units, contracts, lives. Plus, I can't believe that in three years, we're not going to find another way to organize our year. And I think it makes more sense to keep that in abeyance, you get the notification to our community for next year, and they get the notification for the following year, but I think it is foolhardy to try to do a third year at this time for the reasons I've just mentioned.
Thanks, Ms. Bolton. Superintendent, do you have a thought or a reaction on that? I was asking Superintendent if she had a reaction to the thought of a third-year
Just for clarification on the agenda item in terms of the calendar, the calendars did go through committee, and there was review of the calendars at committee. The, from talking to the team, we do believe that it's important to move forward with the approval for '22, '23, and '23, '24. However, if it is the will of the board, because the other CBAs sunset at the end of that fiscal year for '23, '24, if it is the will of the board for us to wait and to extend the contract, I'm sorry, to go through the contract process and then bring the calendar back, we could be open to that as well. We, I follow, I really followed the procedure that had been protocol of my predecessor in talking to the team, but after really getting in and seeing what's in '24, '25, we are open to doing that, but feel really strongly that we do need to move forward with the other two if recommended.
And so just to clarify, no concerns with us deciding to push pause on '24, '25?
No concerns at all for '24, '25. For '22, '23, and for '23, '24, it is really important that we honor the level of communication and the work that's already happened, but these calendars, all of them have gone through committee, and they were approved by committee.
Ms. Jones, thank you, Superintendent.
Yes, I just wanted to clarify, too, that it came as a recommendation from student achievement to do all three. Based on what I understood, that was the desire of the previous administration to do three calendars. I'm hearing Superintendent Wright say it would be the will, the will of the board to decide that, and I would be okay with that, but I'm just saying it. And I think part of the confusion, and I have to say this, I have to, it should have stayed in student achievement. It was too confusing when it was moved over to policy, then it had come back, and then we had too many people involved, too many cooks in the kitchen. So I think that, again, I think it can pass with the two, and if that's the will of the board, but I wanted to make it clear, and I also wanted to say that my understanding from it is that we did this to extend it for the three years because families were wanting a more robust sort of projection of what the calendars would look like. So in part, it was done for that reason. So whatever the will of the board will go with it.
Ms. Wright?
Through the chair, if I could also add to Vice President's response, in all of my previous experiences, it's always been a three-year projection. So in terms of looking at how long the calendar was there and available, so I'm sure that that's why the previous administration recommended the three years, because in most instances, there's been at least a three-year period. I think the only thing that makes this one unique is if there is conversation that needs, that would need to impact the CBAs going into '24, '25. But however, in terms of what's comfortable, we can go in either direction, but I do things at three years, so your point is the norm.
Thank you very much. Ms. Wagner, can you remind me who made the motion for this particular, for the Superintendent's recs?
Mr. Morosky did.
Mr. Morosky, are you open to an amendment that would approve the two years that the Superintendent's asking for, but hold on the 3rd?
Only if it's stricken from the record that policy had anything to do with screwing this up. Nope.
You're going to make this meeting go till 10 o'clock, Mike?
Totally fine, I don't care.
Thank you. So we have a revised motion that's also been seconded. Any other questions or discussion before we vote? So this is going to be a vote then on the same recommendations, but it would take out that third year. Ms. Wagner, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bolton? With that revision, aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Only if I can keep in.
Okay. But we're staying, right, okay, yes. Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes, all right. Thank you. Moving from H to item I, this is the report of the Treasurer. Do we have a motion to accept the report of the Treasurer this evening?
No move.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, questions? Ms. Wagner?
Just to make-
You know, this is the revised Treasurer's report, right?
Correct.
That includes the five-year forecast.
Correct.
Thank you.
Ms. Bolton?
I have, not surprisingly, I have a question, a comment about, or really, this is a question. The transportation dollars that are in this particular Treasurer's report will, thinking back in the history of transportation, these dollars are still for this fiscal year?
It's both this fiscal year and summer scholars. Fine. But yes, it's not next year.
Gotcha, gotcha, the transportation for summer scholars.
June 22nd is when we'll start submitting next year's contracts.
Then if we are starting fiscal year '23- Then if we are starting fiscal year '23, when we pass this budget in June, unlike previous years, where you never quite knew how much we were spending on a particular year because we had the carryover and we were not efficient about getting those things done, we might actually be able to start fiscal year '23, knowing that we have paid our bills for transportation in fiscal '22, or at least, I mean, I won't hold you to it, but it's not going to be this catastrophic...
Well, it wasn't that we weren't paying our bills, please don't understand, misunderstand that. It was about the delay in processing the invoices, not that we weren't paying our bills.
I know that we were late paying some of them, not because of the Treasurer's office, not because of anybody in particular, but there was such confusion...
Not because of cash flow, right.
Okay, exactly. There's such confusion as to what was and what wasn't regarding transportation. It's policies fault. We'll take that, in a minute, I'm going to respond as to why it ended up in policy, but I won't, we'll face the dead horse. But, so that would be important, that there's not those millions, okay, that's great. And then my, my other piece, I was, the number of vendors for summer scholars is pretty ... When we have vendors for summer scholars, do the vendors get the money, or does it go to the individual school and then to the vendors? How does that work?
So the, you're approving contracts with the vendors, so the, the money goes to the vendors as they provide service, and we approve the service that we received through an invoicing process. Not all schools are choosing to outsource their enrichment. Some schools, the teachers are leading, so they're managing the budget.
And then, and then we will be following, you've all been very good about trying to follow the difference, or if there's any difference, about enrollment versus attendance, and then scaling as we go. Okay. Thank you, I'm, that's great, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Do we have other questions about the Treasurer's report? Dr. Moffett?
Can you share, and I tried to look at this and pull it up again quickly, with regard to summer scholars, what's our budget academics versus enrichment versus salary part of the academics?
I just happen to have that file.
I'm just kind of wondering, how much are we putting out? And then I know Superintendent Wright, you kind of inherited summer scholars a little bit, but I'm very interested to see the data on ROI for summer scholars, salary, how many, you know, are we having a lot of teachers, what subject, I mean, I'm, I'm kind of interested in the subject area, does that match with where we have a deficit academically?
So while our Treasurer is pulling that information, just a couple of things that we really have been reviewing. Right now, when we look at what's in the current budget for summer scholars, it really is a million dollars a day for summer scholars, when you look at the number of days that we have and the intended budget amount. So one of the things that we, we will be working on this year, to try to make sure that we're still servicing our students, but we're also being good fiscal managers, is monitoring more closely, really staffing. So right now, we have about a little over 11,000 students that are signed up for summer scholars, which was commensurate with what was signed up this time last year. This time last year, of that 11,000 number, about 7,500 of them actually showed up. So this year, we have a little over 11,000 that have, that have signed up for summer scholars. We, each, each family, instead of it just being the responsibility of the school, each family received an automated message from us on Friday, reminding them about summer scholars, letting them know when their transportation information would be sent to them, so that, that it, it becomes a part of what their expectations are, and it's not just done at the school level. We're meeting tomorrow with principals around summer scholars, because another thing that's really important is, at the beginning of summer scholars, we will be looking at staffing. The majority of the funds that we spend for summer scholars is around staffing. And so when we look at the ratio, it's great to have, you know, one or two students, but at the end of the day, it is a million dollars a day that we're spending for 19 days. And so we really are going to have to make sure that we are reviewing what's happening there. We've also done follow-up work already around our vendor, with our vendors, in preparation for summer scholars, because it's the same thing. Vendors are paid for the students that they serve, so we have to make sure that that occurs. Now, there are some anomalies with that, because as students have already registered, if you are, you know, you have to purchase things in advance, for example, for students that have registered, if those, those students do not come, then we have to address that part of it, but we are really taking a strong look at it, so that tho, those funds will be used in the, in the best possible way for our students.
One more, one more question?
What, to answer your question, I found the summer scholars budget, the academic side is 12 and a half million of the 19, when that includes staffing and instructional supplies. Four and a half is enrichment, and the rest is in transportation, about 3 million.
Dr. Moffett, does that answer your question?
It does, I had another one. Oh, with ris, well, too, is it too late for students to sign up for summer scholars? And then also, are we providing, kind of, for students that can't get there physically, are we doing any type of remote summer scholars for them?
So, through the chair, so the deadline for summer scholars was April the 8th, based on the district, that was the deadline time. The reason that it's important is because we, we're also working with transportation to make sure that our students that are eligible for transportation receive the transportation. So as of last week, we waited till the last possible date, as of last week, last Tuesday, I believe, they received the transportation file for summer scholars, so that students could be assigned to transportation this week. If, and if students come at the onset of summer scholars, and they do not need transportation, then we could accommodate those students through the first week. But after the first week, we will start looking at students and staffing, so therefore it would be difficult to add students after the fact, because the staffing at the school will be determined by the number of students that actually participate. We are doing, just for the, for the last, we are doing an additional follow-up, however, at the high school level, because we do want to make certain that as many students as possible do attend for credit recovery as well, because we do want to make sure that they get what they need prior to going into their junior and senior years.
All right. Any other last questions on the Treasurer's report before we vote? Okay, Ms. Wagner, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes, thank you. So we've now concluded part one, and we're transitioning to a much shorter part two, which is, no intermission, we're going, we're going to finish this meeting before 8:45, watch us. So these, these are things that are outside the Board priorities, don't involve guests or the public, and they're not legal requirements for us to get done in the Board meeting, but they're things that Board members may want to ask about or have asked that we could talk about. We only have one Board matter item this evening, which I think is Ms. Bolton's, around the meeting schedule for next year.
Yes, thank you very much, and you'll all recall, we had this up before us at our last meeting, and again, I appreciate staff work, Board staff work on putting these things together. Everyone was, had an opportunity to review it, and before that meeting, and since that meeting, and I appreciate Member Weinberg, it came with a particular suggestion or a possible change, and that was the only one that staff or I received, and that was the, the possibility, if there was interest on the Board, to perhaps change our business meeting times from 6:30 to 5:30, I think was the request, which makes sense, we've, we've looked at that before, and I think we should, as a Board, discuss that. The only, the only thing that I can recall that was ever an issue was the fact that we do our exec session, you know, beforehand, but the other thing was, sometimes it's so close in the evening time that it is hard for people that are teaching and working to get here for a 5:30. So that was the suggestion, but I appreciate everybody looking at that over, and, and it'd be great to be able to decide tonight, after a good discussion, if we need one.
Thanks, Ms. Bolton. I think, so you're proposing that we decide tonight on the Board meeting calendar for next school year?
Yes, and we, we brought it the last time, and we know that the, the administration needs printing time.
Yeah.
And we did give people an opportunity to respond, so, I mean, unless we aren't ready, but there is an interest by the administration to have that as soon as we can for the printing.
I think, I think the thing that is going to matter most for me is just the Superintendent's perspective on this meeting schedule, and if you feel like it's good and ready to go, no, no problem for me. I think if, if you feel like want a little bit more time to look at it or kick it around, then I'd like to make sure we, we create that. Yeah.
Well, just a question, was that, does that also include the recommended changes for Cal?
No, there was no recommendation of changing Cal time.
Okay.
We didn't, at least, I don't believe the Board staff or I received it for Cal. The suggestion was that, it was really a question, and nobody seemed to, to bite, so...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, and that, and to remind people, that was the idea, that perhaps we go from a 4 o'clock committee of the whole, to the old-time, old-school, 11:30, the lunch hour, but nobody bought that, so it would be, we would, if, unless we want to go with the 5:30 or whatever, it would be, our regular times would be the 6:30 business, the exec session prior to that, and then our Cals would remain at the 4 o'clock.
So I, I would, I think, I thank Board Member Weinberg for the suggestion and the recommendation. I do understand why the meetings are later. However, I think an earlier meeting would allow us to still be accommodating to the times that we are actually running the meetings. So I would definitely support, I think it will be also supportive for staff to have an earlier start time.
That's great. And I think, could people do then, on the Board, a 4:30 executive session? So we would do, if we push up the business meeting start time, we'd have to push up the exec sessions start time. We, we have tried it in the past, sometimes to do them at the end. I think some of the, it really just depends on how long the meeting goes. But do people have any concerns? It certainly works for me. Is there anybody who'd have a problem with a 4:30 exec session start time? Great. So then I think that's a great suggestion. Thank you. Any other issues that need to get resolved for this?
That's it. And so, so we're ready to, to, we've seen it, so I think that would be great, with the revision of the proposal to move to a 5:30 business meeting.
That's great. Ms. Jones?
The only caveat is, we, that means we have to get out of the meeting an hour earlier than we typically get out.
Will do.
Well, if you're self-arguing about policy...
Will do. Okay, so I think we're good on Board matters, and we'll move to inquiries and updates. I have one, but...
Mr. President, so we can say to Board staff, doesn't, it doesn't require resolution or anything, we can say to Board staff to send that to the administration?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. People have inquiries or updates? I'll share one, I think we had a meeting, discussion some meetings ago about this attendance boundary and enrollment ad hoc committee, and there was some open question about membership. I have had a chance to connect with those Board members, and I think we have our committee. As I understand it, our, here's the recommendation to the full Board, that the committee would be composed of a Chair in Dr. Moffett, Ms. Jones, and Ms. Bolton, and that all Board members are invited and welcome to attend. I will be attending. But I understand, unless there's questions or concerns from any Board members, that's the ad hoc committee moving forward, and I just ask them to update the full Board as soon as possible with the meeting schedule, so that people can know about those meetings and attend. I would like to be there as well. Any other questions on that?
No, Ben, we don't want you, Ben.
I, I, I'll try not to stick that to you personally. Okay, that's great. And then, any assignments?
Question for President, so for the ad hoc committees, we will need a representative from our team, correct?
I think that's right, and then whoever you would, would like that person.
We'll have a different...
Okay, if, if no assignments, we'll move...
I have, I have assignments, I didn't realize. We had moved, I'm, I got kind of confused, it'll take but a sec.
Go ahead.
I would like, if possible, the administration to produce, and I don't know if these are assignments as much as it's a request of information, a, a list of long-term subs that we have, or process of scheduling, and that being by school, and also the number of partners for the enrichment by school. That's, just as a matter of equity piece.
For clarification, are partners for enrichment during the regular school year or for summer scholars?
Summer scholars only, thank you.
Ms. Wagner?
The long-term subs, are you talking about filling vacant positions or long-term subs filling for illness?
I would like to see all of it, because it tends to become the same.
Just for the summer or for the whole thing?
The, the year coming forward, as they are staffing, because I, and I ask for this every, about every other year, just because it unfortunately looks like it's at particular schools more than others.
So for clarification, the first ask is for a list of long-term subs for, by school for this current school year?
Be fine for this year, yes.
Okay, which will, so we will, so we'll go through, right, so through the end of this week. And then for the second ask, it's for the partners, who the partners are by school for summer scholars?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other assignments? Okay, so we're going to end tonight with something we usually do at a different part of the meeting, which is announcements and kudos. My thought here was that it could be nice to end on a positive note with some of the good things that people are seeing in the universe with Cincinnati Public Schools, and there are many. Would anyone like to share a kudo or announcement? Ms. Jones?
Yes. I'd like to give kudos in, on a couple of areas. One is to Josh Harden and the Athletic Department for a wonderful CPS baseball, softball, All-Star game. It was called the Chris Nelms All-Star Game, not game, but to honor Chris Nelms, who was a former Board member and an active community person, and I understand, I did not get to see Terry Nelms, his wife, but I understand she was there as well as his family. And as I also understand, the Chris Nelms Scholarship Fund will start next year with one baseball and one softball player receiving a scholarship at the All-Star Game. Also, Gabby Rodriguez was recognized in the opening ceremony, and those of you, many of you may remember that Gabby was the young lady who was hit and killed by a car. She was an 11th grader at West High and a stellar softball player, and she was recognized as well. Then I want to say, I did happen, anybody who knows me know I'm a softball fanatic, you can talk to me for hours about softball. I was also a coach, and so I spent my time watching the girls' All-Star team play. And I said to Josh Harden, I spoke to him about how proud I was to see the advancement of the sport for girls in this district. When I was coaching at TAF a number of years ago, it's just, you know, the, the girls needed so much. I mean, they, they didn't know which hand to put the glove on, that's just how it is. Now, you see these girls out there with these superstar skills and from all across the district at every high school, and so I was very pleased to see that. I do want to give a special recognition to a young lady from West High, who will be a senior next year. Her name is Cameron Canoe. She's a tiny package of fire and dynamite. She, she was just, I mean, fast and high-level skill and, and energy and all that, but she was the home run derby winner, as well as the MVP in the game. She went three for three, so I wanted to say congratulations to Cameron Canoe. And then the last thing I wanted to say, which really hit home for me as I read the Superintendent's report, there's a young lady in there who was the, who is the softball coach for TAF. This young lady is a young lady who, when I was coaching, I taught her to pitch, and she was TAF's pitcher. She is now TAF's coach. And then I was so excited about that, because I remember her and Michael Turner, I taught his daughter how to pitch, and they played on the same team. So I say, you know, I don't take... So I say, you know, I don't take any credit for their talent and their skill. But the one thing that I, the, the one reason why I coached softball was because it was a good character-building activity. And if there's anything that I say I could be proud of is that I do think that just the act of her going back to give to the school where she played ball and to appreciate the game in that way where she's using her talents and skills to play is, is a credit to her. So I just wanted to say I am so proud of her. And her name is Letitia Estiel. And she is in the superintendent's report. So I was very happy about it.
She's excited.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Other announcements? Kudos, Mrs. Weinberg?
I'm just going to follow up off of Board Member Jones. It was a pleasure to attend the All-Star softball and baseball game. And I got so excited that I want to sign my girls up immediately. I said, you know what? Forget about track, let's sign them up for softball. It was really nice to meet Chris Nelms' wife and also his family. I got an opportunity to, to talk with them. And I have a message for everyone. Chris Nelms' wife said hello. She said to say hello to all of you. After that, I was able to attend the Silver Ten along with Dr. Moffett. It was a really, really nice time. We had the color run. Now, I'm going to first tell you all a little bit about this color run. I had no idea that I was going to have color thrown at me. I don't know why I thought that I was just going to go to this race and it was just going to be all fun and colorful balloons. And yeah, if I could put up some pictures, I would. We were full of color. We ran a relay. Shout out to Dr. Moffett, she was the second leg. I was the first leg. My husband was the last leg. We had a lot of fun. It was in the rain. And of course, Board Member, Mr. Craig was there as well cheering on. So it was a very fun event and I'm so happy that we got a chance to attend. So kudos to the Silver Ten School and for all of the individuals who helped to put that on.
Thank you, Mrs. Weinberg. Looks to come down, Mr. Morosky?
I have a couple, too. And I'd just like to say, Ms. Jones, you can give yourself more credit than that. I know you inspired the heck out of those girls. So I'll say it if you don't want to. Even if you are picking on me about my policy committee. I, I had a couple kudos, though. One is Ms. Glenn Kraus over at, Klaus over at Dater High School. She teaches a course on Marvel. It's an English elective and I was able to be a fly on the wall because those of you who know me know I'm, I have it pretty bad for comic books. I never grew out of it. It's kind of weird that it's cool now. It wasn't cool when I was a kid. But I just wanted to, I just want to bring it up because I got so excited to tell my wife about the interesting things you can do and study in CPS. And as a group of students that were just sharing things that were so deeply personal because of something that Peter Parker went through in a Marvel movie or something that Thor experienced. And it was, it was, I taught English for 10 years and I've been in schools a lot. And it was pretty, it was pretty intense. And I was only in this classroom for like 45 minutes and it was the end of the school year, too. And it was nice outside and everybody was really engaged. And so I want to give kudos to that teacher. I also want to give kudos to our superintendent. I got to do her, be with Ms. Wright for her first graduation at Woodward. And, and she'll deny this, but I'm going to, I'm going to, or I don't know. Walking around with Ms. Wright at graduation was like walking around with Beyonce. People were so excited to have you here and it's just, it's, it's nice. And it's nice to see the excitement. People want to take pictures. Students coming up saying, I interviewed you. I was talking with CPS grads today at lunch. And I was like, what student gives a crap about who their superintendent is? Like, really? Like, and people are really excited. And, you know, the process getting you here was very, I think, community-driven. I think it's partly a testimony to that, but it's mostly a testimony to the energy you bring. And I was trying to have a conversation on the way to the car and kept getting stopped by parents. And it was just, it was nice and it felt good. And I just wanted people to know that. And I know you see it on social media and we see it on the news. You're doing a great job getting around. Just appreciate you having you here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky. Ms. Bolton?
Yes.
Mr. Craig, you did not. You're okay? Okay.
Last Monday, the district received visitors from Henrico Education, the school district in Virginia, which is the sixth-largest school district in Virginia. And these folks brought, I think, I want to say 15 staff members, board members, central office folks, their superintendent. And they came to visit CPS largely because of the Community Learning Center model. And the schools where they attended, they attended Aiken. I was there for that presentation. And they also, of course, attended Euler. But also, I were at SCPA and I believe at Rothenburg as well. Seeing various and sundry different parts of the Community Learning Center piece. And they were terribly impressed. And, and it was a great job on the part of our school folks to welcome them and explain this. And they wanted to maintain a continuing relationship at the administrative and Community Learning Center model and the board model as well. And their superintendent wants to establish a relationship with our superintendent. And it was extremely impressive. And as always, the most impressive part was the students sharing the reasons why they love their school and what that means to the future to them. So it was just great and, and well done throughout the day.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Dr. Moffett, did you have something?
I do. And this is the fun stuff I like to talk about, what's going on with the kids. So before I get to the blackmail photos, I'm going to actually say Lee Hispanic, Lee had a Hispanic family celebration on the 10th of May. So congratulations on a successful celebration. I also attended, this is actually Board Member Weinberg. I don't know why she didn't remember this. Her students invited me to the Hyde Park Authors' Celebration. And they were little second graders that wrote books. It was so cool. They actually got, they had all the parents come in and they read their favorite story of the book that they designed. That was cool. Now, we can go, Rob, to the, the, the nice photo before I get to the blackmail photo for Board Member Craig and Weinberg. The millionth book was the Imagination Library, which is Dolly Parton's initiative. And First Lady Fran DeWine brought this to Ohio. And they had a millionth book celebration. They have actually mailed a million books to students age zero to five. And CPS is one of the partners, along with Children's Hospitals, at Cincinnati Public Library. It was just really, really, really cool. And it actually looked like Dolly Parton standing there, but she's not. But it was really, really good to, to stand there and celebrate the fact that books are being mailed to our students, our little, little learners directly. And they, they're celebrating a million books. They've only got 26,000 students registered. So they're like, there's 40,000 plus eligible. So sign your little one up or any little one that you know. Sign them up, ohioimaginationlibrary.org. The last one is, I don't know why I listened to Board Member Weinberg or Craig. Allow me to get into this color run because I didn't know what it was. But we had a really good time. I thought it was just a run, but they actually are purposefully throwing color at you on purpose. And I think it got a little bit more aggressive when they found out we were board members. But the principal of Roberts joined in as well and we were really, really, really welcomed. There's, there's one more picture. This is us, of course, Board Member Craig is not full of color because he said, I don't run for anybody. So we stood there, we threw color on the kids. It was actually really good. We invited Board Member Morosky, who was ill. We'll give you that one. And we invited the superintendent who said, heck, no, I'm not doing a color run. She knew better. We didn't know better. But maybe next year, we'll get a chance to get out there and get some more board members out to, to join us. It was their first color run and it was a success. So this is, those are my kudos for the week, for the two weeks.
Thanks, Dr. Moffett. So we'll, we'll close here in just a second. I just want to acknowledge that this is the last school board member of this academic year. And as it's the last school board meeting of the academic year, I want to thank all of the teachers for the hard work they've done this year with their students. I want to congratulate the kids who are graduating and their parents for the work that they've done with them through their K through eight or pre-K through 12 career. Our meeting's adjourned.